I'd like to call a meeting order at 7:08. Stephanie is not here, so I will, I'll take attendance. Anthony Amato, I'm here. Alan Brown is not here. Greg is not here. Michelle?
Here.
John?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Julie? Not here. She's in the committee as well. Jen?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
And Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum. So, the next item on the agenda was an executive session, which I'm going to ask the board for their concurrence to defer the executive session while we wait for the building committee to wrap up their business and we can gain, I think, two board members. Is Julie there?
Yes.
Yeah, so two more board members. So with that, we'll continue to just move down the agenda until the building committee breaks up. So the next item is the consent agenda. Are there any concerns regarding the minutes? Hearing none. That's approved.
Do you want to do see, Anthony?
I didn't see anybody.
I guess he left.
Yeah, so I assumed, since I didn't see anybody, I didn't ask, but I guess you're right. I should just check it down. Thank you. He was here though, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's coming.
If he returns. All right, the reports.
You say it now, then no one's here, then you can move on.
I move on. No one's here.
He's coming.
Okay. Seeing no one. We'll move on to item E, reports and recognition. So the report of the chair, something's come to my attention that I certainly didn't realize regarding the videos that we are, that we provide as a courtesy to the towns. Apparently, our DVD system has a two-hour plus or minus limit on the DVDs before we need to swap the DVDs over. So if you're watching at the two or so hour mark, you will see what perhaps looks like a skip in the tape, especially if we caught somebody mid-sentence. That's what's been going on. So we're going to try something a little different going forward to accommodate that technical glitch rather than invest in a very expensive system that can hold more than four hours' worth of video. So what we're going to try to do, and if it works, great. If it doesn't work, we'll punt. We'll figure something else out. But at an appropriate moment, as we get close to the two-hour mark, I will pause the proceedings for just a minute so we can swap the DVD out. It should take all of a minute or two, so it won't be a break, per se.
Can't that just be the time that the meeting's?
We could also work very hard to keep all board meetings inside of two hours, which I would absolutely strive for, Jen. Can't guarantee it, though. I'm sure there are a couple of board meetings out there that have two breaks in them, which means we've gone over the four-hour mark, and I see a head shaking in the back, so we know that's happened. So we're going to try that. That's all I have on, from my end, for this evening. Pat?
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Happy to see you all. Enrollment, just so that you're aware, we have, thank you, 688 students. The change from last, two weeks ago, we have two new students in Washington Primary School, one in Reach and one in 4th grade, and two new students in Chapag, 8th and 10th grader, and there are no new tuitioning students. So currently, we have 47 students in Burnham, 70 in Booth Free, 148 in Washington Primary, and 688 in, I'm sorry, 423 at Chapag, for a total of 688. You did receive a correspondence from a Mr. Wilkinson, so I hope everyone saw that in their packet. The library clerk position, we, a small group met, and we are going to have a library clerk position at Burnham School for 20 hours a week, and that has been posted. Just for your information, we are, I sent you the email, but we have a group going to Fenway Park this week, and they're going to see behind-the-scenes workings of how things go on at Fenway. So I just wanted to let you know about that, but there really is no action needed at this point. School is going very well. I do want to commend the Washington Primary staff and the Chapag staff. They did a great job on Wednesday when we lost power, and we waited for a little while. We did not get a confirmation of when the electric would come back on, so we did dismiss. And in retrospect, it was a good decision. The power could have gone off again, and it worked out beautifully. Emily and her staff did a great job. Kim and her staff did a great job here welcoming those children who were not picked up. So I, it's good practice. We reflected and we debriefed to tighten up our procedures, but again, I want to thank the staff. And that is my report.
Thank you. Jen?
Sorry. So a small group met about the library clerk. I'm just, just so I'm clear, is that, is that something we would usually discuss at a meeting, or, I don't know how that usually works? Because I was expecting us to talk about that here, but I guess not? So I'm just asking.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I guess normally, that discussion would happen during budget time. But because the library clerk retired in August, it's really a superintendent's decision.
Okay.
And I did ask the chairman, and he invited the executive committee of the board, the four officers, to meet with Teresa and Kathy, and after a lot of deliberation, we decided that we needed the position right now and that 20 hours would be a good compromise.
I guess I'm just wondering if that's protocol, because it's, I didn't, it's new to me, so I just don't know if that's how it usually is. I don't know.
I don't think replacing a library clerk is something that typically rises to the board, and it's certainly not the board's preview, but the superintendent reached out to the chair and the treasurer, looking for some input and some guidance on this. So we provided that guidance. And it was going to come back in front of the board if the administration and the superintendent couldn't reach a resolution, but they did. So.
Interesting. Okay.
We moved on.
Interesting.
Michelle?
Did we miss the public comment?
Yes, sir.
We did. You need to, in order to make a comment, I need to submit something to writing to you?
Nope. We were, we covered it on the agenda, and you weren't here. Sorry.
I had two quick questions. One, the field trip, I feel like I remember seeing in the information about that, that there was money needed. Was that figured out, or no?
Money? I, no one has asked me for any money. I assume they are, students are paying. No one has come, it has not come to my attention. Maybe it's come to Kim's, but I know nothing about any money for the trip.
Okay.
I actually know an answer. I don't know if that helps.
Jen?
I just was at the PTO meeting, and they're discussing it. There is some funds that are needed, so I know that the, each student is paying $40 to go. There's additional money. I think there's like $1,000 that they still need. They're requesting some money from the PTO. They're not going to do the whole thousand, but they're going to try to help accommodate some of that, or offset some of that.
Okay. I didn't know if we had any, if there was any way we could help, but it was a wonderful opportunity that came up.
If, Jen, being that you were there at the meeting, if you want to let them know to put in writing, to submit to me, to ask for some funds, I'd be happy to see if I can find, that's fine.
Because of where they live.
It's fine with me, I guess I should say.
My other, my other question was just about the power outage, and I was wondering what
the, I mean, I'm glad everything went well, and I understand it's a challenging situation, but what is the concern about having students in the building without electricity? I guess with no phone, there's probably safety concern? I was just wondering.
Well, there are a couple of concerns. The emergency lights last only 90 minutes, and they were going off.
Okay.
The bathrooms don't have windows, so they were dark.
Yeah.
There's no water. You cannot flush. So, you know, we gave it a little time before we decided.
Yeah.
Plus the fact that Reach is in that building. So you have three and four-year-olds, you have students who are really needy, and so it's a decision.
Yeah.
You know? You make the best decision you can make at that point, and I, as I said, if I had a chance to do it again, I would do it again, under those circumstances.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll wait, give Jen a second to get back here. Also, if we can note that Greg has now joined us. Where, and Julie? I didn't see you sneaking. Thank you, Julie. Jen?
Hi.
Any news?
They will submit to them, they approved certain amount of funds. I don't know what the exact amount is that they still need. So they will submit to Pat the difference? Is that right?
Yeah, we'll see. And hopefully, yeah.
And I don't know, but I just wondered.
We'll do what we can.
That's fine.
Bob's on vacation, so.
No, I understand.
No, well, the mice is away, what is it? Mouse is away, the cat will play, or the cat's away, the mouse will play, whatever it is.
Okay. Thank you for doing that, Jen.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on. Must there any further questions? Let's move on to the, well, actually, let's use this as an opportunity to go into exec session. So we're going to go back to, which member?
They may be here for reasons, so maybe you want to do them all first? I don't know.
This may take, this may involve.
Oh, I don't know.
You want us to leave?
No.
No, we are going to leave.
No, no.
Oh.
Asking you, if you, if you can, to stay put. We were supposed to go into executive session right at the beginning of the meeting, but since we wanted to give you time, the building committee time, to work through and not break up that conversation, we just proceeded down the agenda, so we need to jump back while we have our counsel in the, in the room waiting for us. So if you, if you don't mind, we'd ask that, we're going to take a break here. We're going to adjourn into executive session, and I'd like a motion to go into executive session. Do we need one?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We're in executive session.
Do you have a rough idea how long it's going to be? Going to be an hour?
No.
Oh, gosh.
Maybe, hopefully, 15 minutes or less.
Right.
Your motion needs to be put first?
That's true.
Thank you. The purpose is, on the agenda stated, is discussion of our tuition-in program.
And you need to invite me and the attorney?
And I'd like to invite our superintendent and also our attorney from Shipman &amp; Guglin, Ben Fresen Kendrick. So we're in executive session as of 9, as of 7:22.
Right here. 7:29.
Okay, we're, we're out of executive session and back into regular session at 7:57. Again, in keeping with our, the order that we originally thought we'd have this meeting, we're going to, we're going to make another move to accommodate our guests, who have been very patient, and that's the longest, 15 minutes, I think, so don't ask anymore. I'm out of guesses. But we'll, we'll move to, if the board, again, is agreeable, we'll, we'll move to item F2, update on the AgSTEM Building Committee. Are we in agreement? We're all okay? Okay. Seeing no objections, then we'll move to the update on the AgSTEM. Greg, floor is yours.
Yeah, let me, I'll be very brief. I want to, the project is moving. I'll be as brief as I can. The project is, is moving because decisions have to be made, and we need to keep, we need to keep things going on this, but we're also sensitive to the idea of not spending any more money than we have to spend prior to full bonding. And so I want to give you just a couple items. If you recall, we told you about the need for a commissioning agent. A commissioning agent is there to review all the proposed designs for mechanicals and other systems to make sure that they are functioning and delivering the services that they were supposed to. It's a very important position. We put that out to bid. We received seven responses that we, I appointed a committee to review them. They have identified four, and we're going to start interviewing those people. We will let you know, as a board member, when those interviews are, should you desire to attend and see what's going on. So we'll, we'll keep you apprised of that. In addition, we have several things that we need in order to move the project forward. As you know, we engaged the T2 people to provide some advice to our, in guidance in the development of the curriculum, as to what particular equipment would be needed in order to flesh that out, and thus what space, and the impact of the design of the space. That work is proceeding apace, and we expect to have that work concluded in, in order for our, our architects to give us a report this month, before the end of this month, as to what expected changes they, they expect for the building. So that's proceeding, that's proceeding apace. One, there are a couple of things that we need, and we've been to you for authorization to expend certain monies. We needed to do some additional surveying. We also needed a traffic study that was required, and in addition to that, we're also needing some septic design work as well, that we have not previously obtained your, your approval to, to expend. As far as the, the traffic study goes, the principal thing that's driving this is time. The traffic study could not be done during the summer. It has to be done when school is in session. They want counts. They couldn't do it the first week or two school was in session. So we're now at the point now where we have to move forward on that. We need to do it before the snowplows hit the roads, because once they, you know, if you know these traffic counts are constructed by putting a tube or a hose-type thing across the road, and it measures cars, those do not work well with snowplows. And so as a result, everyone doing traffic studies is trying to get them done in the fall, before November, preferably before Thanksgiving, but preferably before early in November, if snow starts coming. So those need to be done relatively quickly. So what we're, you've authorized us to expend the $19,000 and change for that traffic study, but what we're going to do is we're instead going to, what the building committee has instead done is authorized the, up to $5,000 to have the initial counting work done, so that the work that needs to be done, that's date and time and weather-sensitive, can be done now, and the report we can hold off on. So again, we're trying to keep the expenses in line. We do need septic work, we, because, as you know, we had good news about our septic system. We think that the flows will allow us to fall under the State Health Department rather than the State DEEP, which will save us a lot of money going forward and a lot of time. We think our system works very well, but it was never permitted, because it was built before those, those systems were permitted from the state. So we're going to have to do some work to get that up to snuff. We're going to have to do some work in order to design a separate septic system for the Ag building, the animal building, because we believe that that will be good from the standpoint of the strength of the effluent not being in our general septic system, but most importantly, because topographically, it'll work better and maybe cost us less money than if we were to try to, to move all of that material downhill to get it into our tank. It would have to be pumped in. It would be an expensive process. So that's something that has to, that has to be done fairly soon, and again, it's weather-driven, and that's because you need to do perk and deep-hole tests to determine where the leaching fields are going to be. And we try to, as our consultant told us tonight, we try to put them in areas that are most advantageous to minimize the amount of septic sand, which is very expensive being brought in. So in order to do that, we need to do a fair number of perk and deep-hole tests. Those tests have to be done. You're digging an eight-foot hole, and you're seeing how fast the water percolates. They obviously have to be done before there's frost in the ground and before it gets extremely cold. And they also need to have present the official that's going to be dealing with the septic system. So in order to do that and arrange that, it's got to be also done in the fall. It can't wait till the winter. Otherwise, we get into that blackout zone, and then we won't have the information when we need it in order to get, do appropriate local permitting. So we're going to come back to you. We, I tried to get it on the agenda for tonight, but couldn't get that done, but we, we are going to need to spend some money, and we, and we now know that it's going to be $13,000 in order to do the work that's date, time, and weather-sensitive. So for about $1,000 and change less than what you authorized us to spend upfront on the traffic study, we think we can get the work done on both of those to be done, that we need to be done now. We may get to the point, hopefully, we won't be at the point where we need to go further with their studies before we have a state decision on bonding, but we think that we can at least get that far. So we're going to be back to you at the very next meeting with, I don't think we can get it on the agenda tonight unless someone wants to move, and we have two-thirds vote, but we, we really would like to move forward with the, with the, with the initial work on the septic to get us into the, the pipeline, as it were, so that that decision, that decision can be made. We have not made any, we're still working on the issue of going forward with the survey, but we're going to be going forward with that shortly, with that additional surveying work shortly, but no decision was made tonight. We need more, some more information in order to settle down on the proposal of what we're doing going forward, and we expect to do that at our next meeting on the 20th of September. So that's where matters are at the building committee. Any questions? Yes?
So it doesn't sound like you need an authorization of any money to move forward from a.
Well, we do. We do, because we have not gotten the authority to expend monies on our septic study. We need a, we would need very quickly an authorization to, to expend up to $13,000 to commence the field work and various other work on Phase 2 of the septic study.
But it sounded like, what you said, by not doing all of the traffic study, but just doing the counting now, that the, so you don't need additional money at the moment? You just want to spend it on the septic instead of doing the entire?
No, we don't, we don't need any money. We need authorization. And, you know, we have 20, we have, I mean, the voters approved a $39 million project. So the money, the, the money is available to spend, but what we need is authority from the board before we can spend it. Normally, in a building project, in the minute the, the building committee was appointed, the board would have appointed a building committee and given it authority to spend up to the maximum amount that had been approved at the referendum. That's normally what happens, but here, because we're in this situation with the state kind of not moving toward advancing that, this board has been reluctant to give us the full authority. So I keep coming back to you with periodic authority requests. What I'm hoping is, is once this is bonded, I'm going to make a request for the balance of those funds so that we don't have to come back, because the whole idea is not to have the board manage the project, it's to have the building committee manage it. So I do need authority to expend up to $13,000 on, on the septic work that needs to, the septic design work, initial meetings and field planning that has to go on, in order, field work that has to go on in order to do that. I do need the authority to do that, so the building committee can move forward on that, and I need it as quickly as we can do it.
So can we do that tonight?
Think we can. With a two-thirds vote, you can add it to the agenda. A motion and a vote of two-thirds to add it to the agenda, and then a second motion to approve it.
So I would like to make a motion that we add this to the agenda.
All right, so we have any discussion? All right, well, I guess we're no discussion on that. We just, yes, Pete?
Well, I'm not, as you all know, everybody in the board knows I'm not a supporter of AgSTEM, not a supporter of the concept. Know what it's going to leave us with. The state has already told us that you're not going to be reimbursed for all these expenditures. No one in the past has, to my knowledge. We keep nickel-diming ourselves, 10 here, 15 here, 20 here, and I understand why you want to do it, and I'm not opposed to why you want to do it, but I'm not a supporter of spending all this money on a project that's never going to come to fruition, ever. The state is in such a financial hole, it is not going to approve $500 million worth of bonding, and we're a component of that. And we're not high on the scales, I'm sure, based on the wealth of our three towns. So I understand why you want to spend this, I understand what your goals are, your aspirations are, but we have to stop the spending at some point. You're nickel-diming us to death, so we're going to get a big bill at some point. What, are we up to $800,000 right now? Is that what we are obligated? What is the number that we've put out so far?
The last number I saw was closer to $700,000.
Okay. Well, close to eight, then, whatever. So we're obligated to at least spend that much money, correct, if the project doesn't go through? So where does it end? I mean, there's always something that comes up that needs to be done to get this program ready to go if the state bonds it. But we're spending money on a project with the state in its current financial condition that's like throwing money into a big hole and hoping there's a bottom. There is no bottom. We're not going to get the money from the state, but the board can't come to that conclusion. Why not? Look at the state's financial condition. I'm not against the concept of the program, that based on the situation the state is in, and based on the fact that 140 kids isn't going to pay, and we're not going to get 140 kids based on the schools, the six sending schools, where the taxpayers are going to be underwriting the lack of revenue that comes in from this program. We don't have enough schools to fund it. If the board members are hung up that they're going to get 140, 150, 160, whatever, kids, that ain't going to happen. Schools aren't just going to give you children. They have the same problem we have. So what I'm saying to board members, at some point, you have to turn the spigot off, or you'll be up to $2 million, or, or $2.5 million, or whatever million it is, and then the state says, well, we're not funding it. And then Melody Curry already, already wrote to the board, or I have a copy somewhere, that under no condition, the state doesn't have to reimburse us for the money we've spent, and the state has no obligation to reimburse us for the money we spent. So this concept that the board thinks, we're going to get money, a million, million-eight, million-five, $700,000, whatever we spend, the board is relying on that to dig them out of a hole if we don't get the project, that there's no reason to believe that we're going to get the money. So I understand what you're doing, I understand why you want to do it, I understand that you're sincere, the board is sincere, wants to, sees this as the only outlet to solve its problem, but 100 to 140 students don't solve our problem, and we're spending a lot of money. And if the state doesn't give us what you've spent, what you want to spend, to me, where are you going to get the money? Where are you going to get the money from? You're going to have to raise your budget. So I don't know. I think we're digging a hole. That's all I say. Every time I hear AgSTEM, it's a hole, and I don't see anybody on this board, I don't see the state filling that hole. So that means the taxpayers have to fill the hole. So I'm really opposed to spend, at some point, we have to turn off the spigot as board members. We can't sit there and put 10 up, put 13 up, put 50 up, no, it's 20, no, it's 100. The number's already up, as you said, close to $800,000. I think it'll be well over a million by the time we're finished, before we even find out whether we're going to be accepted. So while I'm not opposed conceptually to the whole concept, I really feel that where we have no reason to keep funding something. We have no idea whether it's going to pass or not, Greg. I really feel that way.
We're just adding something to the agenda.
Say one thing, not in response. I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't see John's hand. John?
Yeah, I'm going to reiterate what I said last meeting. The state legislature is scheduled to meet on, I believe it is Thursday, to come up with a state budget. If that happens, I'm sure that bonding appropriations will follow shortly. I don't know, two weeks, three weeks, whatever. I think in order to be guaranteed reimbursement, we should wait to see if the state is going to appropriate the bonding for this project. If not, I'm going to vote no on any spending until the state decides emphatically. I don't think that two weeks is going to throw this project into a, into a death spiral. I don't think that two weeks is going to throw this project into a death spiral. So, but like Pete said, if we spend a million dollars and we don't get reimbursed, I don't know. I think it would be better spent on the science labs or something like that. You know, again, I don't understand why we can't wait until we get an emphatic answer from the state, yes or no.
Mr. Chairman.
Greg?
There was one thing I didn't mention when I spoke before, and I perhaps should have. And that is, when I'm here asking you for this, I'm wearing my hat as chairman of the building committee. The building committee exists for one purpose, to execute the project the board has told it to execute. My concern and the reason why I'm asking for the authority to spend money and not waiting is because I'm worried about holding the delivery date of this project, which right now is scheduled to be September, the last few days of August of 2019. Already, it's become apparent, based on information provided to me by ONG, that it, we may be not finished with the project until closer to the end of that semester. We will probably have enough to open the AgStem school. We'll probably have the AgStem facilities pushed first. But every delay that we, all of the time that we had in this project for delays is being wrung out of it by the delay imposed upon us by our legislatures not asking. And I don't think, John, it'll be two or three weeks, because these guys have been wanting to get out of there since June, and probably be two or three hours, because they're trying to get out of there. They've been up in Hartford months past their session. But still, the fact is, the delays are unconscionable, but now they're affecting our delivery date. And if we wait a couple of weeks to start these projects, first of all, we have no guarantee the legislature's going to act in two weeks. Second, if we wait a couple of weeks, what my fear is, is that then we won't get them started and moving down the road to schedule things till October. And if they don't get them in and we have an early snowstorm, they may decide to pull it and we won't have the information we need on the traffic study or the septic until the spring. And that will be far too late to get anything in 2019 school year for a building. Because then you're talking about not having information till a year before you want, a year and a few months before you want the facility. And we will not have been able to progress far enough to go out to bid at the time we need in order to deliver it. So, we are at the point where we got us, if we're proceeding on this project, if, which is what the building committee's been tasked with, we really need to move these things. And so, sensitive to the issues that I think that John has eloquently stated and Pete has, we've tried to figure out a way to juggle the contracts we have and the work we have so we do absolutely what's necessary now and hold off on the portions of the study that can wait a few weeks. But we're now talking about spending less money than has already been authorized for, just for the traffic study alone. So, I think that makes sense to do it anyway. That's it.
Yeah. Just a point of clarification. Did you say we have a schedule from ONG that says construction right now will not end until December, January of 2019, '20? And that the planned opening of the school, which was the fall of that year, may or may not happen?
No, that's not what the schedule says. What the schedule says is it's got construction running out into the end of December, sometime in December of 19. Now, when I asked Ken Biaga at ONG, who's the person who's coordinating the project for us, he indicated to me that, no, they will be able to get the AgStem facility in place. But there may be some piece of it, there may be some issue, and we have to look at the curriculum because we're only trying, we're only talking about what's, the portions of it that are going to need to be opened or what you're teaching to ninth graders and 10th graders or just ninth graders? I can't remember anymore.
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10. So, there may be pieces of it that we can push on a slightly slower track if they're not needed for ninth and 10th grade first semester curriculum. And so, that may be, maybe involve some juggling, but he indicated to me he thought we could have the AgStem facilities complete in time for the opening of school and that we would be able to open the school. Because my concern is, how do you invite people to come here to a program if your school isn't built? And the answer is, they can build it to the degree that's necessary to open the program and that it will be fine. There may be a few things that have to wait. There may be some things on the science labs that get pushed a little bit. Maybe some of the site work is still in process rather than, but the building and facilities that we need to teach will be open in time for school. That's what he's assured me. But if we keep delaying and we lose another season, all bets are off on that.
Pete?
Well, the whole concept of this program is, if you build it, they'll come. So, let's spend money now because if we build it, everybody will come. I don't believe that. That's why I don't support it. That's my theology. It isn't going to fill up, schools aren't going to send us the students. And in the end, taxpayers are going to be stuck with a million, million and a half dollar bill. And if the, and if the program does go through, there's going to be enough money to underwrite it. That's how I feel personally. So, it's up to the board, the will of the board, to do what you may. But I think spending all this money without knowing you're going to be in reverse for it, reimbursed for it, is a gamble. And if you're willing to take that gamble, then you can do it. If you have the votes, you can do it. I just don't believe it's going to work.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to add this motion to spend, what is it, 15,000 on the perk tests, to the agenda.
Well, actually, it's a little bit more than that. It's, what I'd like, I'd like the verbiage in the minutes to read, that it's a motion to authorize the building committee to spend up to $13,000 on Phase Two of the septic design. And we're going to have some specific language, but I don't have all that specific language. But it's primarily, there's some, there's some site meetings, there's some, there's some coordination, and then there's the conducting of the field work, which includes deep hole and perk tests.
Okay. So, again, the motion is to put that motion on the agenda. So, all those in favor, raise your hand, please. All those against? I'm sorry. All those in favor, please raise your hand again. All those against? The motion passes? I'm abstaining. Motion?
Are you going to announce it? She didn't ask you?
I didn't think I needed to.
You got to vote.
I don't think I have to vote as a chair. But if, to make that clear, all those abstain, that would be me.
So, it's 70% of people.
Right. So, it's two-thirds, the motion passes. Now, it's on the agenda. Is there any, that motion hasn't been made yet. Is there any other discussion up to this point? For Greg? Michelle?
You pretty much answered what I was going to ask about where we were on the schedule and opening day. And all I want to just say is that keeping, keeping the project moving and meeting that target is of great concern to me. I know how many millions of dollars we lost in escalation by the last year that the state pushed us off. And I know how hard everyone worked to bring this project down to a size as small as possible that still met the needs. And trying to find another couple million in there, I can't even imagine. So, thank you for the work of everyone on the building committee, for working on this. The situation is very challenging with the state, and so I appreciate how frustrating that must be. And I thank you for trying to keep us on schedule because it's important. Thanks.
So, I have a question for the building committee. Can the building committee share a schedule that we can reference going forward to understand where we are and where we're not? I know personally, I find it a little hard to kind of see all these pieces coming together and when everything is really needed and how it's needed. For example, the traffic study, I know, has to be submitted before we go for final permits, which is sometime next year. So, I don't know if we're fighting the snow this year or can we wait to the thaw before we pick it up? So, there's a lot of, I'll say nuances in the schedule that I think the board would benefit from understanding. So, can we get a schedule, please?
Yes. I literally just got it, and I had some questions about it in terms of the explanation. So, as soon as we have that a little bit more final and the building committee has seen it at our next meeting, we'll bring it to the board.
Thank you. I'm waiting.
I didn't realize that we did. I figured it went under action items or something. I didn't know.
Nope.
All right. All right. So, I would like to move that we approve, I don't know, Greg, that, or authorize the building committee to spend up to 13,000 on Phase Two of the septic and all the other stuff Greg said.
Greg, would you like to clarify your motion, please?
Yes. It'd be a motion to authorize the building committee to spend up to $13,000 on the Phase Two of the septic study, which would primarily be certain meetings, coordination, and the deep hole and perk tests that are field, the field tests, which include deep hole and perk tests.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I do. Really long motion.
And Jen, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? Okay. The motion passes. All right. Moving.
Has the space waiver for the science labs been reconciled yet? Isn't there a question about the science labs being?
Put your, your mic on.
Put your mic.
Remind me that the space waiver for the science labs?
Wasn't there a question about square footages of the science labs being inadequate or undersized, the redesign? And there was a waiver supposedly?
All right, I'm going to ask Pat to address that because I'm not sure what.
And I'm going to, when Bob gets back from vacation, give you the answer specifically from the state and DAS. But basically, we did put in for a space waiver, not that the science labs were too small, that the building space was too large for the population, based on the fact that Chapag has so many large spaces, such as the mall and the library, that it, our percentage of square footage is off balance. So, Bob did present that as a waiver to the state. I honestly don't know if he has anything from them.
I thought there was a specific issue with the actual redesign of the, what is there, four existing science labs there?
That I don't know anything about. I don't think there's any problem with the science labs, as far as I know.
Thanks.
Jim?
Mr. Chair, I'm really not trying to give you a problem, a hard time, but I just, as a matter of procedure, are we to assume that if you're not going to call for abstentions, with all those in favor, all those opposed, any abstain, if you're not going to call for abstentions, that the secretary is to state in the minutes that anyone who doesn't raise their hand has abstained? Is that your procedure from Melon?
No, I don't think it is, but it's my understanding that the chair is not compelled to vote. According to Roberts rules.
But then you're abstaining. That's fine.
If that's what's implied then by not compelled to vote, then I'll, we'll look that up or research that and if.
I'm not asking that. If you want to abstain, that's fine. I'm just, how is the secretary supposed to know what the votes are? You call for approved, yays, you call for nays. If there's somebody who doesn't raise their hand, is that, is the secretary supposed to take it that that's an abstention? That's all I'm asking. Since you're not calling for abstentions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All habits.
No, current Mr. Chairman. If, I didn't know if you had a response. I just wanted to add something because we had this issue come up a couple of years ago, I think, on the board, which is that the interesting thing about that is, is until the vote is declared final, people can change their votes. So, it just might be a little confusing if someone has abstained. You know, until you declare it a final vote, it may be difficult for the secretary to figure out whether or not that person has abstained or they're still contemplating their vote. And I know that's a Roberts rules principle, that you can change your vote up until the time it's declared, you know, motion passed. In fact, you may be able to change your vote even after that, before the meeting's over. So, it just gets confusing. So, you may want to announce abstentions just for that reason. That's my suggestion.
Okay. I will, I will certainly offer abstentions and also come back on a, whether or not the chairman needs to declare abstention, yea or nay, for a given vote.
All right. My only purpose is for clarity of the minutes so that the secretary knows what the votes are. That's all.
I appreciate that. And we'll, we'll make sure that we're clear on that. Okay. Getting back, trying to keep our agenda, Michelle, there was one policy which you wanted to, I know, read tonight? Would you like to go ahead? Which, which one? I'm going to go back to it to close out, since we're in new business, to just stay in theme, at least try to.
So, if you look at the agenda, we have four policies for first reading. And I apologize, I was preparing late this afternoon for the meeting and I did not realize that we did not have copies that had the highlighted new language for three of them. So, I'm going to ask that we just look at B, which is Policy 4112.51, personnel certified, non-certified, because that is a new policy. So, everything therefore is new language. If you look at, and this was all sent to us, this is reference checks. It is a whole, it's a rather lengthy policy, several pages long, all required by law based on new acts by the state of Connecticut. If you have questions about it, if it's not clearly stated in the policy, I'll have to take those back to either our lawyer or to CAEB. But this is written to bring us in compliance with the new state law.
Jim?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve 4112.51 and 4212.51, personnel certified, non-certified, as first reading of the board.
Have a second. Jen, thank you. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Michelle, do we, when we have these various policies, do you run it through the board's legal counsel? Or do we have to? Or just for clarification?
We only do that if we need clarification, especially if we feel that there might be some conflict with a current contract. These are sent to us by CAEB and they're written by their lawyers. So, we try not to send everything to our, I mean, this is very boilerplate from what's required from the state. Every now and then, CAEB will throw in some language that seems a little more towards commentary and occasionally the committee will decide to take it out. But we always check to make sure that we're not taking anything out that was required by law.
Any other questions, discussions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, or, excuse me, opposed, say nay. Hearing none, any abstain? Want to abstain, the motion passes. Okay. And we'll go back up to our committee reports. Michelle, you have the floor again. And while you have the floor, why don't you cover your respective committees?
Okay. So, at advance, I have nothing to report. I forget the date of that joint meeting that they're doing.
October 4.
Okay, thank you. I knew it was coming up. Finance normally would meet before this meeting, but Bob is on vacation, so we will be meeting next week. And we're going to be meeting at 6:00, which is our normal time. I'll I'll remind the committee again, but if anyone has, well, that's our normal meeting time, so I figured I would leave it at that time. And then for policies and bylaws, we will also be meeting for our first meeting of the year in two weeks, and I have nothing else to report.
I misspoke. It's October 5, I'm sorry.
Okay.
May 6 at advance.
Thanks.
It's the Thursday, apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Education, Michael?
Nothing new. It's been on our agenda for some time now that September 25 is our next education meeting. I expect the leader to be speaking at that meeting.
Mike, your mic.
So once again, we have a meeting coming up on September 25. That's an education meeting, and I believe Teresa DeBrito is going to be speaking to the board. Perfect. So we, the state has not released the results, so that's still a question mark. Okay, well, we'll, there you go. That would be interesting, too. And then you'll notice that we have another meeting scheduled in October, October 16, October 16, if you're looking at your calendar. And so I just want to encourage everyone again, if you have ideas of what you'd like to hear more about, in terms of what the district is doing, education for our students, just let me know, and we'll try to schedule something in the calendar year.
Okay, thank you. Greg, facilities?
Facilities committee is meeting next, right before the next board meeting on the
Facilities committee is meeting right before the next board meeting on the 25, and I'm sure we'll have a full agenda, and I'll make a report to you at our next business meeting.
Okay, and negotiations?
Negotiations, we are, we've had some discussion with the administrators whose contract runs out in 18, June 30 of 18. We've not, we are not, we don't have any other further negotiations, we just concluded, as you know, with the nurses, and that contract, I believe, has been signed, and so that's finished. So we will have upcoming negotiations between now and June 30, probably, that we have to conclude with administrators and with the other unions representing the cafeteria workers, and the unions representing the paras, the custodians, and I know I've forgotten one.
Secretaries.
Secretaries, yeah. The secretaries are with the paras, and the custodians are with the cafeteria workers. And those have to be concluded before their contracts expire in 18.
John?
Could I back up to the building committee report?
Yes.
For facilities, since the science labs are potentially going to be part of the facilities, so there was the Castle Booze Architects' report for the state schematic design review meeting on July 12. And the third item down says pursue space standards waiver for science lab project. There must have been a problem with the square footage of the redesign of the science labs.
Unfortunately, I was not able to be at that meeting, so I'm not quite sure what they're discussing, and that's why I was unfamiliar with it. John, I'll look into it and report to you. I'll get back to you, and then we'll let the board know at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. So getting back then to negotiations, Greg, we had a second executive session actually scheduled regarding the administrator's contract. It sounds like we're not in a position for, to have that meeting? No need to have that meeting this evening?
Yeah, there's a contract provision that we're not having finalized yet that I have, I'm working on.
Okay. So we will then postpone that item for the next appropriate meeting. So with that, I'd like to circle back to the original or the earlier executive session regarding the tuition in program.
I'd like to make a motion that the board authorize the superintendent of schools to disenroll non-resident tuition students as recommended to the Board of Education pursuant to BOE policy 5118.3.
Do I have a second? Jen, thank you. Any discussion? Which I don't believe we can have, because it's an executive session. So we'll move straight into a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those against, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion passes. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Anthony.
What now?
He said opposed, and.
Right.
Did I? Okay. That's because Jim is, just because Jim has got me all wrapped around, wrapped around the axle. Do we need to take the vote again?
No, I don't think anyone's in that category.
No, I didn't see anyone say nay, but, all right.
Everyone voted yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Jim.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. We are out. Thank you.